That we pause to reflect on the beauty of anger. We've heard, expressed by so many in our city, across our nation, and indeed, around the globe. And let's remember all of those in our city who have lifted their voices in pain and frustration over these past weeks, calling out to us, their elected leaders, to hear them, to see them, to acknowledge their lived experience and their anguish, and more than that, to make lasting change that the city deserves. Many times in the past two years, we as a council have stepped forward to denounce bigotry and hate. After an attack on a synagogue at Pittsburgh in 2018, after attacks in El Paso, Texas, and Dayton, Ohio, in 2019, both fueled by xenophobia and racism. Tonight, I hope we will step forward together again, not looking outward toward other cities, but within, to challenge ourselves to engage in open and frank discussions of race and racism, to consider our own decisions and actions through the lens of racial equity, and to increase our accountability to those whom we are privileged to serve. So we will begin this evening with prayer and pledge of allegiance, and that will be led by Counselor Michael Hart. Counselor Hart?
Thank you. Please bow your head. We are gathered as leaders in this city with the responsibility to lead in a just and peaceful way. Lord, we pray that we feel that you fill our hearts and minds with the solutions of peace and justice. Lord, you have created us in your image, and you have created us in many shapes, sizes, and colors, all as beautiful as the next. Tonight, we pray for wisdom and strength to come together and unite as your children. Lord, you have given us all unique talents and abilities that make us strong and powerful in our ways. We pray for understanding of our differences, and highlight our differences, and praise our brothers and sisters for all of their qualities. We've come a long way in this country, but we have not come far enough. We pray for the endurance, not to understand the plague of racism, but to progressively work to end it. Lord, you blessed us in many shades, all equal in your image. Let us not judge. Lord, in your name, we pray for every innocent life lost. May they rest easy in your kingdom. Please, time for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic. For which it stands.
One nation. Under God. Independent, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Our clerk will now conduct a voice roll call. Counselors, please signify your presence by stating your name and answering present, following the clerk's reading of your name, so that we have a clear record of who was in attendance. Madam Clerk, will you please proceed with the roll call?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Adamson?
Counselor Adamson, present.
Counselor Anay?
Counselor Anay, present.
Counselor Barth?
Barth, present.
Counselor Boots?
Counselor Boots, present.
Counselor Brown?
Counselor Brown, present.
Counselor Carlino?
Present.
Counselor Dilk?
Counselor Dilk, present.
Counselor Ethan Evans?
Counselor Ethan Evans, present.
Counselor Jared Evans?
Counselor Jared Evans, present.
If you can hear me, will you please nod? Right. I think we may be having technical difficulties with the clerk's reception. Please give just a moment.
Can you all hear me? Thank you. Counselor Graves?
Counselor Graves, present.
Counselor Gray? Counselor Gray?
Counselor Gray, present.
Counselor Hart?
Hart, present.
Counselor Holliday?
Present, thank you.
Counselor Jackson?
Counselor Jackson, present.
Counselor Johnson?
Counselor Johnson, present.
Counselor Jones?
Counselor Jones, present.
Counselor Lewis?
Lewis, present.
Counselor Masgari?
Counselor Masgari, present.
Counselor McCormick?
McCormick, present.
Counselor Maury?
Counselor Maury, present.
Counselor Oliver?
Counselor Oliver, present.
Counselor Osley?
Counselor Osley, present.
Counselor Potts?
Counselor Potts, present.
Counselor Ray?
Counselor Ray, present.
Counselor Robinson?
Counselor Robinson, present.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have a quorum. The next item on our agenda is introduction of guest community partners, and this evening we will have two with us present. The first is Dr. Virginia Kane, who is the Director of the Marion County Public Health Department, and Dr. Gerardo Mapome, Associate Dean for Research, Richard M. Fairbanks School of Public Health at IUPY. Dr. Kane, we would love to hear from you and get an update from you on where we stand Dr. Kane, you're muted.
Can you hear me now? Okay, sorry about that. Thank you, President Osley, and the rest of the council members for allowing me to bring you an update in regard to COVID-19. We are currently experiencing 10,358 cases, so we have reached the 10,000 mark. We believe by this upcoming weekend that we will reach over 11,000 cases. So we're steadily seeing cases with 623 deaths, but I will also say that about a month ago, we were averaging over 300 cases a day. Two weeks ago, we were averaging about 150 cases a day. About a week ago, we have got down to averaging about 100 cases a day. So you can tell that the stay in shelter and the recommendations that we have made is having us trend and going in the right direction, although we continue to see cases that are occurring. Now, let me just also add a little bundle of caution because of the protesters that have been in our community, and I believe that yesterday had the highest number of protesters, I think averaging somewhere between 3,000 to 4,000. It is very difficult to do what we call social distancing, and a number of walkers were wearing no facial coverings. And so when you're shouting, or you're speaking real loud, you are putting out a larger amount of respiratory droplets in the air. And we do have a number of visitors that are visiting us also from outside the state. So we will have to monitor this aspect very carefully in terms of any transmission of COVID-19 and its impact on our community. And the symptoms may start five to six days after your protests have started, but you will have to go up to at least 14 days after the very last protest in large numbers like this in order to see if you've seen a new peak or new increase of a number of coronavirus cases. So while I'm telling you we're looking really good right now, I have to wait a little bit for about another week or so to just feel a lot more comfortable that we're not seeing any transmission from our protest folks that have come. But we are seeing a significant decline in our emergency room visits related to COVID-19. We're seeing a decrease significantly in our hospitalizations that are related to COVID-19. And we're finding that hospitals and ambulatory clinics are not testing as many people as they were compared to a month ago, suggesting that we're seeing less patients that may be exhibiting symptoms. But I do also want to say that recent data has highlighted the fact that somewhere between 30% and 35% of individuals can be infected and yet have no symptoms, but they're just as contagious, but they are unaware that they're infected, and so anyone in close proximity to them might not realize that they're vulnerable for contracting this infection. So I just say, these are the issues facing us from the COVID-19. And President Osley, I just want to say, when we look at the demographics related to the data, African Americans make up almost over 40% of the cases. They have 2.5 times a higher hospitalization rate compared to their white counterparts in the hospital, and they have twice the death rate of COVID-19 cases compared to their white counterpart. So we see our racial and ethnic populations are disproportionately impacted by this coronavirus cases. And I want to shout out to those individuals who are over the age of 65 and older. Your immune system kind of wanes as you get older, so that you are at a higher risk of contracting the COVID-19 if you're 65 and older, or if you're an individual that has chronic medical underlying conditions such as diabetes, hypertension, asthma, or chronic lung disease, kidney failure, or you may be immunocompromised, undergoing recent cancer treatment, or you can be on some medications even for severe rheumatoid arthritis that can impact your immune system. And so those are at extreme risk, and any protester also that may want to be screened, whether you have symptoms or not, that's also going to be made available at all of our testing sites in Marion County. So I'll stop right there and answer any questions anyone may have for me related to this. I'm sorry, I can't hear you. Now I can hear you, yes, okay.
Can I want to find out a question from my fellow counsel?
Counselor Boots?
Thank you, Mr. President. To clarify one statistic you mentioned, to make sure I understood it right, is it accurate that 30% to 35% of the infected population are asymptomatic?
Our population may have no symptoms whatsoever, but yet they're infected and they're considered contagious, yes. Any other questions, anyone?
This is Gerardo Mapome from Fairbanks School of Public Health. Two quick comments. One of them is that Dean Halverson is also in the audience. I'm acting as a backup, but I'm happy that he is available to answer questions about epidemiology if necessary. The second comment is that I would like to offer a small precision to the comment by Dr. Kane, that yes, it is indeed a fact that non-white population is affected, I mean, in simple terms, twice as much or twice as gravely as white population, but that is not only restricted to African Americans, but also includes Hispanics, and that is a major problem in regard of the limited access to care that many of them have. Thank you, Mr. Kane.
So, and thank you for making that point, because, you know, initially when we had testing available, you needed a doctor's order to get testing at our first site, and I always have to compliment Lilly for stepping up to the plate and providing a lot of testing to our health care workers, our essential service workers, and then our elderly and childcare and grocery individuals, but you required a doctor's order. So for a lot of our low-income and vulnerable populations, if they don't have a primary care provider, they didn't have a, they couldn't get a doctor's order unless they had to pay and go to an urgent care facility or someplace like that, which cost $75, $100 to be evaluated. So it's been so critical for us to get that community testing now for populations, and I, again, always have to compliment Reverend Jeffrey Johnson at Easton Star for being our very first location and one of our hottest spots to allow their location to be used for our testing, for people to get tested without needing a doctor's order and the testing made available for free. But I think Paul, Dean Haverson, should come in a little bit about the prevalence and explain what that means in our community.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Dr. Kane. I'm Paul Halverson. I'm the founding dean at the Fairbanks School of Public Health, and I do want to describe to you the prevalence study that we have been conducting in partnership with the State Health Department, and we found in the first wave of study, these are randomly selected people that have, were selected in an opportunity or in a, with the purpose in being able to estimate the entire population of Indiana. We found that roughly 2.8% of people either have the, currently have the virus, or have had the virus, which means that there's still a whole lot of people, roughly 97% of the people, that have not had the virus yet. And as Dr. Kane so importantly points out, the mortality rate for people over 60 is substantially higher than for all other age groups. And actually, I did want to point out the fact that unfortunately, we, in our great state of Indiana, we have, we all have relatively low status, and in particular, Indiana is ranked 41st in the nation for our overall health, and if we look at Indianapolis as a city, it has similar rankings across and compared to other large cities. But we also don't suffer equally. And one of the things that we discovered, as you all probably are aware, the differences in life expectancy and infant mortality, in surviving a stroke, and a whole host of other issues are substantially worse if you're a person of color, and particularly black or Hispanic. And that also is true when it comes to the COVID-19. So 2.8% is the overall prevalence of the disease in our state, but we also offered the opportunity in Marion County, working with our churches and other community organizations, to invite community residents that were interested in being tested. And I have to tell you, it was quite shocking that the results of that testing suggested, and again, this is not random testing, this is testing by people that just showed up at the invitation to be tested, but in some cases, the rate of positivity was over 40%. And these are, this is basically for people who are Hispanic or African American, who are our frontline workers, our essential personnel. And again, as Dr. Kane pointed out, there's a substantial number of people that have the disease and don't have any symptoms. So this is, this is far from over with 97% of the people that don't have immunity, and again, we don't know how much immunity people will have even after they are struck with this disease, but we know there are a lot of people that are at risk. And so I just wanted to point out to you the support that we feel for and work with the county health department and the city of Indianapolis. We want to be a partner with you in all phases of this disease, both in the research and in contact tracing and other things that need to be done. But thank you so much for allowing us to be part of your meeting this evening and to support the important work that you're doing. Happy to answer any questions, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, I have one. Counsel Oliver?
Yes, sir.
Yes, thank you. Dr. Kane, thank you so much for all that you do.
Thank you so much.
We appreciate you very much.
I appreciate you saying that, thank you.
Oh, we all, you and Governor Cuomo, I mean, the credibility of both of you across the country is enormous, so we're glad to have you in Marion County, and we wish you luck, and we wish all of us well. My question is, after the testing and quarantine, are we into tracing? What are some of the information that you're searching for when you're tracing someone and you come up on that person? What are the questions that you're asking them as you do your tracing, or those that do the tracing?
So Paul, you want me to go first, or you want to go first, or?
Please, go ahead, Dr. Kane.
So what we try to do is, we have somebody positive. One of the first questions we ask, you know, are you employed? And if you're employed, where do you work? And so, were you around any coworkers where you might not have been wearing any face coverings, and you were exposed to that person within three feet of that person, talking to them for longer than 15 minutes? And so we have to be concerned that there's possible transmission of that virus in the air. So I look to see any coworkers that you might have been exposed to. Then I definitely have to look inside your household. Do you live with anybody? Do you have a young child in your house? So, or, you know, for a lot of minorities, they're multi-generational folks that live within the same home. So do I have someone that's a senior inside the home that I may be concerned about if they're not infected, they may be at higher risk? Or maybe a relative came over and you remembered that that relative looked like he had symptoms, and they might have, you might have put it off and said, oh, that was just, he's having an allergy, and so this is not really symptoms of COVID-19. So we have to go back at least 14 days back in your history, because it can take up to 14 days for your symptoms to develop. So what are the places that you like to frequent? Do you belong to a group or a club where you get together? It may have been like in a, you know, do you attend, like, sports? Have you been to some places where you had a prolonged visit? Maybe I was getting my car repaired, but I'm sitting there in the waiting room talking to the guy who's working with my car. So we kind of get a diary for them to fill out, and we have a lot of frequently common questions that we asked, and based on that discussion, then we know from that diary who we need to contact and get that same history from them, but those individuals may need to be tested for COVID-19, whether they have symptoms or not. And then based on if we think they're infected, we have to do that same type of history with them to see who they've been exposed to. You may have been in a faith-based setting, and you didn't do, you might not have had social distancing or wearing face masks, so there are just so many places that you can go to in the last 14 days. But we've had the advantage of mostly being stay in place from a shelter, so we won't have to do as many places as we normally would based on if we were 100% in operations for all of our businesses being open.
The only, Dr. Kane, the only thing I might add to that is just to underscore the importance of this activity. In addition to staying in place orders and easy access to testing, contact tracing has been known to be one of the most effective strategies to help curtail this disease, and those jurisdictions that have done contact tracing well have seen substantially different results, because if we can quickly move to reduce the exposure of individuals that are positive for the virus, we can reduce the spread of the disease. So that's one of the reasons why this is such an important strategy for public health, and we must be very aggressive about trying to identify and isolate people with the disease.
One other thing that I do want to just add and mention right quickly, right now, all we've primarily had to deal with is the COVID-19, but in the fall, we're going to see influenza come back. And so we are expecting, and all the experts at NIH, Dr. Fauci, folks from the CDC, and a lot of our infectious disease colleagues across the country, believe that we will not only be experiencing COVID-19, but we'll be experiencing influenza at the same time. And you can get both infections at the same time, but if we see our hospitals beds being overwhelmed with influenza and COVID-19, we won't have enough hospital beds to be able to handle both. So the quicker we can curtail this infection and have a very competent and efficient contact tracing, we can reduce the number of spread of infectious disease cases. Plus, we're going to have to have a tremendous campaign against influenza starting early August to try to encourage everybody to get their influenza vaccination. That's going to be huge. It may save someone's, definitely save someone's life.
Thank you, Dr. Kane. Associate Dean Mapome, and I did not get an opportunity to formally welcome Dean Paul Halverson, who is the founding dean of the Richard M. Fairbanks School of Public Health. Thank you all for being with us this evening. All right. So fellow counselors, the next item on our agenda is official communications. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. President. Ladies and gentlemen, you are hereby notified that regular meetings of the City County Council, Police, Fire, and Solid Waste Collection Special Service District Councils will be held electronically and in the City County Building in the council chambers on Monday, June 8, 2020, at 7:00 PM, the purposes of such meetings being to conduct any and all business that may properly come before regular meetings of the councils. Sincerely, Bob Osley, President, City County Council. Ladies and gentlemen, pursuant to the laws of the state of Indiana, I call to be published in the Indianapolis Star on Wednesday, May 27, 2020, and in the court and commercial record IBJ on Friday, May 29, 2020, a copy of a notice of public hearing on proposal numbers 144, 145, and 159, 2020. Said hearing to be held on Monday, June 8, 2020, at 7:00 PM in the public assembly room of the City County Building. Respectfully, Serita Hughes, Clerk of the City County Council. Ladies and gentlemen, I have approved with my signature and delivered this day to the Clerk of the City County Council, Serita Hughes, the following ordinances. General ordinance numbers 13- General Ordinance numbers thirteen, thirteen through twenty-three. General Resolution numbers four through six. Special Resolution Number Fifteen. Joseph H. Hoxette, Mayor. Mr. President, this concludes the official communications.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda. If you will unmute your phones for just your connection devices for just a moment. I will ask for an adoption of the agenda. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Mr. President, I have a motion to amend the agenda.
Very good. Council Vice President Adamson, please proceed.
Thank you. I would move to amend the agenda to advance proposal number one sixty-two, two thousand twenty, currently in the introductions of proposals to the first item of business under special orders final adoption. And proposals number one seventy-nine, one eighty, and one eighty-one, two thousand twenty, also found under introduction of proposals to the first items under business under special orders public hearing for action this evening. There are timing issues regarding these proposals that require passage before the next council meeting, and I so move.
Second.
All right, the motions are properly moved and seconded. Madam Clerk, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote for that motion.
Counselor Adamson.
Counselor Adamson, aye.
Counselor Anay.
Counselor Anay, aye.
Counselor Barth.
Barth, aye.
Counselor Boots.
Counselor Boots, aye.
Counselor Brown.
Counselor Brown, aye.
Counselor Carlino.
Counselor Carlino, aye.
Counselor Delk.
Counselor Delk, aye.
Counselor Ethan Evans.
Counselor Ethan Evans, aye.
Counselor Jared Evans.
Counselor Jared Evans, aye.
Counselor Graves.
Counselor Graves, aye.
Counselor Gray.
Counselor Gray, aye.
Counselor Hart.
Hart, aye.
Counselor Holliday.
Aye.
Counselor Jackson.
Counselor Jackson, aye.
Counselor Johnson.
Counselor Johnson, aye.
Counselor Jones.
Counselor Jones, aye.
Counselor Lewis.
Counselor Lewis, aye.
Counselor Mascary.
Counselor Mascary, aye.
Counselor McCormick.
McCormick, aye.
Counselor Maury.
Counselor Maury, aye.
Counselor Oliver.
Counselor Oliver, aye.
Counselor Osalee.
Counselor Osalee, aye.
Counselor Potts.
Counselor Potts, aye.
Counselor Ray.
Counselor Ray, aye.
Counselor Robinson.
Counselor Robinson, aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. That is unanimous.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. And in keeping with what we have done for the adoption of the agenda as amended, I will simply ask for an aye from fellow councilors.
Aye.
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 Are there any opposed to the adoption of the agenda as amended? All right, very good. The next item on our agenda then is the approval of the journals for May the eleventh, two thousand twenty. Do I have consent? That would be an aye. All right.
Aye.
Aye.
Consent.
Aye.
Consent.
Thank you, councilors. We will now proceed to the presentation of petitions, memorials, special resolutions, and council resolutions. And the first item on our agenda is proposal number one sixty-four, which recognizes the life and work of Betty Lou Fuller Cockrum.
Good evening, Mr.
This has been sponsored by our councilors Brown, Adamson, Barth, Boots, Carlino, Evans, Evans, Graves, Gray, Jackson, Johnson, Jones, Lewis, Mascary, McCormick, Oliver, Osalee, Potts, Ray, and Robinson, who will be presenting this evening.
I will, Mr. President, Counsel Brown.
Okay. Please, go ahead.
I want to thank you all for this. Betty was an incredibly special person to me, and I know to a lot of you. A special resolution for the life and work of Betty Lou Fuller Cockrum. Whereas Indianapolis and the people of Indiana lost a great servant and leader in Betty Cockrum on May sixteenth, two thousand twenty. And whereas Betty was not a native resident of Indianapolis, but someone who chose to live here for more than three decades. Whereas Betty served as the State Budget Director under Governor Al Bannon, and then as the CEO of Planned Parenthood of Indiana Kentucky for more than fifteen years, retiring in two thousand seventeen. Whereas Betty taught generations of women how to claim their seat at the table by carrying a torch in the darkness and passing part of that flame to everyone who needed light in their life. And whereas, the Indianapolis City County Council will continue to work to achieve the goals that Betty gave her life to. Be it resolved by the City County Council of the City of Indianapolis and of Marion County, Indiana. Section one, the Indianapolis City County Council recognizes the life and work of Betty Lou Fuller Cockrum. Section two, the council encourages those who love and miss her to Julian Center. Section three, the mayor is invited to join in this resolution by fixing his signature here too. Section four, the resolution shall be in full force and effect upon adoption and compliance with IC thirty-six, three, four, fourteen. Mr. President, if you will, let me for a second. Betty was a great person to many of us. And in a time where we can't get together and celebrate her life has been very hard. But knowing that she's touched so many of us and we carry forward in her name is a great honor. We will be getting the resolution to her family and know that we all love and support and care about them. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Brown. I believe you made a motion.
Yeah, I would make a motion.
I could.
All right. And seconded. Thank you, councilors. Please, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you, councilors. Any opposed, signify by saying nay. The motion carries. Are there additional comments from fellow councilors? Seeing none, Counsel Brown, thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is proposal number one six five, introduced by councilors Brown, Adamson, Evans, and Potts, which recognizes the fifty-first anniversary of the Stonewall riots and the June celebration of Pride Month.
Thank you, Mr. President. A special resolution recognizing the fifty-first anniversary of the Stonewall riots and the June celebration of Pride Month. Whereas, June is recognized internationally as Pride Month. The month of June was chosen for Pride Month to commemorate the Stonewall Inn riots, which occurred at the end of June nineteen sixty-nine and effectively launched the modern-day LGBTQ movement, and
Vice President Adamson might have lost his connection.
Technical difficulties, sorry.
Would you like to read the next, whereas Vice President Adamson?
Counsel Potts, please go ahead and do that. I'm having technical issues.
Sure. Whereas, the Indianapolis City County Council's caucus, LGBTQ caucus wants to emphasize historic relevance of Black, Brown, and transgender activists who actually organized the six-day riots in New York City and become the founding voices of the LGBTQ community, Marsha P. Johnson and Sylvia Rivera. Their voices helped usher in the ideas that LGBTQ acceptance were possible in the United States, including in Indiana. And whereas, the city wishes to recognize Indiana's vibrant and visible LGBTQ community because not only is it one of the largest in the nation, but it's also an accurate representation of a diverse community. Of the approximately two hundred and thirty thousand LGBTQ Hoosiers, sixty-six thousand four hundred LGBTQ Hoosiers are also a person of color. Further, about eight thousand people in Indiana identify as a Black or Brown transgender Hoosier. Our Black, Brown, and transgender LGBTQ Hoosiers are the reason why Indiana was able to fight back against destructive anti-LGBTQ policies like HJR three and RFRA. And whereas, Indianapolis's Pride Festival and Parade has been canceled this year to protect people from contracting or passing the COVID-19 virus. The global pandemic may keep Hoosiers at home this June for Pride, but LGBTQ Hoosiers can still show their power of pride and visibility by committing to vote this election day on November third, two thousand twenty.
And whereas, according to research, LGBTQ Hoosiers make up about four point five percent of Indiana's population, roughly totaling two hundred and thirty thousand Hoosier adults. However, only eighty-one percent of those folks are registered to vote, leaving more than forty-eight thousand LGBTQ Hoosiers without the opportunity to express their voice where it matters, most the ballot box. And whereas, the LGBTQ members of the Indianapolis City County Council encourage every resident of Indianapolis to register to vote by going to www.indianaVoters.com and registering online before the October fifth, two thousand twenty deadline. And whereas, the Indianapolis City County Council will continue to work to make it safer and easier for all of our residents to vote this November. Now, therefore.
Be it resolved by the City County Council of the City of Indianapolis and of Marion County, Indiana. Section one, the Indianapolis City County Council proudly recognizes Pride Month in the city of Indianapolis. Section two, the council encourages all residents of Marion County to register to vote. Section three, the mayor is invited to join in this resolution by affixing his signature here too. Section four, the resolution shall be in full force and effect upon adoption and compliance with IC thirty-six, three dash four dash fourteen. So moved.
Second.
There are seconds.
Second.
Very good. Motion's improperly moved and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Very good. Motion carries. Are there additional comments from councilors?
If I might, Mr. President?
Please, Counsel Potts.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think it's not lost on any of us in the LGBTQ community the relevance of this anniversary of the Stonewall riots, a protest in response to police violence against the LGBTQ community that resulted in real change for our community. But our community still desperately needs more change, particularly queer members of our community, Black and Brown. And I think it's really relevant with the current events happening right now that this resolution is here. And I think we all have something to learn from this history. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Counsel Potts. If there are no additional comments, I would say thank you all for this special resolution. And we'll go then to our next item on the agenda, which is proposal number one eighty-two, introduced by councilors Adamson, Barth, Boots, Brown, Carlino, Evans, Evans, Johnson, Jones, Mascary, Osalee, Potts, Ray, Robinson, which declares racism as a public health crisis in Marion County.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a special resolution declaring racism as a public health crisis in Indianapolis and Marion County. Whereas, the social detriments of health defined as the social and material factors that influence health, including employment, housing, education, healthcare, public safety, and food access are known to impact life, health outcomes, beginning even before birth. And
whereas, health equity is defined as all residents having the opportunity to attain their highest level of health. And whereas, inequities are created when barriers prevent individuals and communities from accessing these conditions and reaching their full potential. And
whereas, the American Public Health Association finds racism to be a barrier to health equity and has named racism a driving force of how the social determinants of health are distributed. And whereas, the American Academy of Pediatrics has declared that racism is a barrier to wellness that has a profound impact on the health status of children, adolescents, emerging adults, and families, and that the continued negative impact of racism on health and well-being through implicit and explicit biases, institutional structures, and interpersonal relationships is clear. And
whereas, the United States Office of Disease Prevention recognizes that racial discrimination negatively impacts health outcomes. And whereas, the American College of Physicians has found that African Americans in particular are at risk of being subjected to discrimination and violence against them because of their race, endangering them and even costing their lives. And
whereas, the nonpartisan Nonpartnership for Women and Families has found that in the United States, health and racism are inextricably linked, creating a harmful impact on individuals and communities of color, including unequal access to quality education, unemployment, livable wages, healthy food, stable, affordable housing, safe, and sustainable communities. And whereas, the American Psychological Association, the American Medical Association, and the American Academy of Family Physicians have declared hate crimes a public health concern. And
whereas, the U.S. National Institutes of Health report that multiple studies suggest that experiences of racism or discrimination raise the risk of emotional and physical health problems, including depression, cardiovascular disease, hypertension, and even death. And whereas, researchers at the IU Public Policy Institute and the IUUI Polis Center find that racism negatively impacts the health of communities of color in Indianapolis and throughout Marion County. And
whereas, the IUUI Polis Center Savvy Program has found that racial disparities in educational attainment in Marion County are largely a result of historic policies dating back to the early half of the nineteen hundreds, such as segregation and linking school funding to property values, and find that these practices have led locally to generations of Black exclusion from education, healthcare access, and other resources largely monopolized in Marion County's white communities. And
whereas, the negative repercussions of historical racism, including but not limited to racist federal housing policies and discriminatory lending practices of the twentieth century, known as redlining, continue to negatively impact access to access to nutritious food in Black neighborhoods, which contributes to higher rates of type-two diabetes, hypertension, heart disease, and obesity. Economic security for Black residents who are more likely to live in neighborhoods with less access to traditional banking institutions and high numbers of payday lenders. Educational achievement for Black residents who are more likely to live in areas with underperforming school systems. Rates of environmentally based health programs for Black residents such as lead poisoning and asthma due to living in neighborhoods with older buildings in greater proximity to pollution-causing industries, resulting in rates of chronic diseases, including asthma, which are significantly higher in communities of color throughout Indianapolis. And rates of infant and maternal mortality of Black children and Black mothers due to living in geographical areas with less access to healthcare and resulting mortality rates more than twice that of the white infants. And
whereas, the IUUI Polis Center Savvy Project has found that historic and systemic inequities in Marion County put many Black individuals at higher risk for being exposed to the novel coronavirus, more vulnerable to novel infectious diseases such as COVID-19, and more vulnerable to having a serious case of COVID-19. And whereas, Black residents of Marion County have tested have tested positive for COVID-19 at a rate nearly twice that of white residents. And
whereas black residents are 29% of the Marion County population but account for 37% of COVID-19-related deaths today. And whereas a life expectancy in some Indianapolis communities of color is as many 14 years less than that of their white neighbors. And
as racism operates on systemic, institutional, and interpersonal levels, all of which operate throughout time and across generations. And whereas on February 20th of this year, the members of this council unanimously adopted Proposal 852020, declaring racism unjust, reiterating our support for equal rights for all, and affirming the city's commitment to ending disparities based on race, place, or identity. Now, therefore...
be it resolved by the City-County Council of the City of Indianapolis and of Marion County, Indiana. Section 1, we declare racism to be a public health crisis in Indianapolis and Marion County that affects all members of our community and deserves action from all levels of government and civil society. And
Section 2, that this council commits to frank and open discussions of race and the impact of the decisions we make upon racial inequities in our community, that these discussions will be integrated into our daily work together, that we will address issues of race and racial disparities in a full and forthright manner. And Section 3, that we call upon all city and county elected officials and departments to continue with urgency the review of policies and procedures for the purposes of eradicating implicit and explicit racial biases and develop instead policies and procedures that build racial equity. And Section 4, that city and county departments should immediately access all available tools to eliminate disparities based on race, place, or identity across key indicators of success, including health, education, criminal justice, the environment, employment, and the economy. And
Section 5, the city and county departments shall collect data disaggregated by race on department staffing, procurement, contracting, and recipients of government intervention to the council and make this data publicly available via their website with the intention of incorporating racial equity into the analysis of governmental action and strengthening the city's commitment to analyze and address racial disparities. And
Section 6, the mayor is... Sorry. The mayor is invited to join in this resolution by affixing his signature here, too.
And I saw move, Mr. President.
Second.
Very good. The motion has been properly moved and seconded. Thank you, councilors. Please, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposing? They signify by saying nay. The motion carries. And while we still have Dr. Halverson, Dr. Kane, and Dr. Maupome, I just would like to hear from you all on what we have just resolved through this special resolution, if you could.
Hi, this is Dr. Maupome again. Thank you so much for the opportunity to witness this momentous occasion. I really applaud the kind of drive and impetus that is driving this kind of situation. It's excellent to see that there is a well-thought-out, very well put-together resolution. I have a question for you, however. I could only identify the mention of black communities in your resolution. Is there a reason why Hispanics or Latinos are not included?
Thank you, Dr. Maupome. They should be included. And I think we have references to black and brown communities in here. But the most poignant thing that we have found these last days and these last weeks has been the long, 400-year history of racism against black Americans. And so that we don't lose the poignancy of that 400 years of history and that 400 years of racism, I think it was important that we acknowledge the black community in light of that.
I do understand the historic context. And I think it is important. But I think it should be relatively simple to address all communities, racial or ethnic groups, that are substantial and well documented disadvantage. And there is no mention of brown communities in the document. I think this is something that should be addressed. And thank you so much. I can tell you a
Thank you. And thank you again, Dr. Maupome. But I want to clarify again that the racial disparities and the racism that we find most prevalent in this country is not about Hispanic or Latinos. And I know that they do experience it as well. But the prevalent racism is with black communities. And I don't want to lessen that, or I don't want to soften that. I think it is important that we acknowledge that. So, Dr. Halverson or Dr. Kane?
So let me just... Can you hear me? Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me? So let me just say that I want to commend the city council and President Osley for your leadership in getting this resolution put forth. And as we have stated, we've had centuries-old systems that have been in place in terms of racism that's impacted our mental, social, economic, and educational successes. So that we don't have access to the homes, our healthcare, our education, if even more important, the job opportunities. So it's terrible when we have one in four black children in our communities who've been exposed to violence or at risk for developing post-traumatic stress disorder, like a soldier out in war. These are what our young children are facing when we look at the violence and they see the violence that's impacting us. But I also want to make sure that this is a first great step, but it is a beginning. And I'm looking forward to the city council to come back with some concrete recommendations that can really help address this issue, not just the symptoms, but how do we get to it systemically? I have a really good friend of mine, Linda Mary. She's a past president of the American Public Health Association out of Chicago. And she gives this analogy. You know, if I've got a brain tumor and I've got a headache, well, you're going to give me an aspirin to help relieve that headache. But eventually, you know that brain tumor is going to expand and cause death. So we really got to get, from a systemic structure standpoint, how we can get our corporations, how we can get our organizations, our civic groups, making concrete steps in order to address the health inequity from a socioeconomic status, education status. And I'll give one point that I love for the city council to adopt, or actually two points I love for the city county to adopt. I've been looking at how many homeless that are out there that don't have a permanent home. They don't have a job. And we report out unemployment rates. Well, you may have the lowest unemployment rates in Marion County, but because you don't capture the unemployment rates correctly... Yeah, I may be employed, but if I'm making $70.25 an hour, that was the wage 25 years ago, I don't have enough for a living wage to put food on my table, pay my utilities or rent. We don't know the huge disparity in our people of color. If we're not even capturing the data right to tell us we have issues or disparity. So I invite you to consider some of those issues, maybe even considering, thinking about, can we pass a living wage for all of our communities, but also making some structural changes for the police inequality that impacts our people of color and even folks of different sexual orientations or even our Latino populations and other populations besides just African-Americans, Hispanics, Burmese populations. I look forward to being able to work with you. And because you've made this a public health issue, this can highlight and increase funding coming to us to address this racism. Because it is now a public health issue, we can bring in some public health dollars to address these resources to the organizations who are the best at doing advocacy related to this and making systemic inequalities lessen as a result of this. So just thank you again. I look forward to working with any council member related to this issue because I think it can impact all people of color as we address these issues. Thank you.
Mr. President, members of the council, Paul Halverson here. I won't add a lot, but except to say how proud I am of your action. This is indeed historic. The creation of a declaration linking racism as a public health crisis in Indianapolis and in Marion County is indeed a bold step. What's so important is you recognize that its linkage between racism and poor health. And as you recognize the problem, you also set forth important ways in which to resolve the problem, to address the problem, and to create a greater sense of equity and the importance of this issue as an overriding issue for our county. I'm so proud that our Richard M. Fairbanks School of Public Health stands in strong support and solidarity with the county as we support you in trying to address in every way this systemic racism that has been part of our heritage and will be part of the way in which we resolve this issue by addressing it forthrightly. And we stand with you in support of this very important declaration. And we're very proud to be with you tonight. Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you as well for spending your evening with us and addressing this issue of race and racism in our city. And we look forward to being able to work alongside of you and hopefully getting assistance from you as we move forward, wisdom and assistance. And that is from the Fairbanks School of Public Health, that's from the Marion County Health Department, and from all of our allies here who recognize that we do have these disparities and it has impacted the health of our black communities. And I think the term that we had used in here is communities of color. So thank you all for being with us this evening. Fellow councilors, thank you as well. So we will then proceed in our agenda. And the next item on our agenda is the introduction of proposals. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal Number 161, introduced by Counselor Potts, referred to the Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee, approves the issuance of economic development tax increment, excuse me, revenue bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $7,113,000 for Kite Realty Group, LP, to finance the acquisition, construction, and equipping of certain economic development facilities consisting of approximately 56,000 square feet of retail along with upgrades to the facility and surrounding areas to current industry standards for ingress and egress, parking, HVAC, and energy efficiency, as well as 267 new multifamily residential units located in a 13-story mixed-use development building, Glendale 2 project, located in the Glendale 2 allocation area at 6101 North Keystone Avenue in District 2. Proposal Number 162, introduced by councilors Robinson and Boots, referred to the Committee of the Whole, amends Article 5, Section 2.02G, a fiscal ordinance number 202019, the 2020 City-County Annual Budget regarding the maximum number of authorized employees for Marion County Community Corrections. Proposal Number 163, introduced by Counselor Adamson, referred to the Public Works Committee, authorizes 29 parking meters to Parking Meter Zone 3 on East Street between Wallace Street and Massachusetts Avenue in District 17. Proposal Numbers 179 through 181, referred to the Committee of the Whole, and were introduced by councilors Barth and Osley. Proposal Number 179, approves an additional appropriation in the 2020 City Non-Departamental Budget in characters 1, 2, and 3 from the Coronavirus Relief Fund totaling $76,71,363 to fund response efforts addressing the COVID-19 pandemic, including public health measures like testing and tracing and the provision of face coverings to residents, programs to combat the secondary economic effects of the pandemic faced by Marion County residents, small businesses, and nonprofits, expenses incurred or that will be incurred by city government, city-county government in response to the pandemic and reimbursement of eligible expenses incurred by eligible political subdivisions within Marion County. Proposal Number 180, approves an additional appropriation totaling $8,448,000 in the 22 city and county non-departmental budgets in the Federal Grants Fund, Consolidated County General Fund in the County General Fund in characters 1, 2, 3, and 4 for COVID-19-related expenses eligible for reimbursement from the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, Public Assistance Award. Proposal Number 181, approves an additional appropriation totaling $3,951,043... I'm sorry, $34 in the 2020 budget of the Consolidated City of Indianapolis and Marion County in the Federal General Grants Fund in characters 1, 2, 3, and 4 for COVID-19-related expenses eligible for reimbursement from the Supplemental Justice Assistance Grant Award. Mr. President, this concludes the introductions.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is Special Orders, Priority Business. Proposal Numbers 166 through 169, are rezoning ordinances certified for approval by the Metropolitan Development Commission on May 27, 2020. If no councilor wishes to call down any of the proposals for reconsideration, the proposals will pass into law. Does anyone wish to call down any of the proposals for reconsideration? Counselor Maury?
Mr. President, I move that proposal Number 166, 2020, rezoning case 2019-ZON-069, be scheduled for a hearing before the council at its next regular meeting on July 13, 2020 at 7:00 p.m. And if the general counsel read the announcement of such hearing and enter the same in the minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Second.
All right. The motion has been properly moved and seconded. We will now proceed to a roll call for our vote.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Madam Clerk?
Counselor Adamson?
Councilor Adamson, aye.
Councilor Anay.
Councilor Anay, aye.
Council Barth.
Barth, aye.
Council Boots.
Council Boots, aye.
Council Brown.
Council Brown, aye.
Council Carlino.
Council Carlino, aye.
Council Dilk.
Council Dilk, aye.
Council Ethan Evans.
Council Ethan Evans, aye.
Council Jared Evans.
Council Jared Evans, aye.
Council Graves.
Council Graves, aye.
Council Gray.
Captain Gray, aye.
Council Hart.
Council Hart, aye.
Council Holliday.
Aye.
Council Jackson.
Council Jackson, aye.
Council Johnson.
Council Johnson, aye.
Council Jones.
Council Jones, aye.
Council Lewis.
Council Lewis, aye.
Council Mascary.
Council Mascary, aye.
Council McCormick.
Aye, Council McCormick, aye.
Council Maury.
Council Maury, aye.
Council Oliver.
Council Oliver, aye.
Council Osalee.
Council Osalee, aye.
Council Potts.
Council Potts, aye.
Council Ray.
Council Ray, aye.
Council Robinson.
Council Robinson, aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. The vote is unanimous.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'm going to call on General Counsel Tor Kim to read the announcement of public hearing. Council Kim.
Thank you, Mr. President. This council will hold a public hearing on rezoning petition 2019-ZON-069, Council Proposal Number 166, 2020, at its next regular meeting on July 13th, 2020. Such meeting to convene at 7:00 p.m. in these council chambers in the City-County Building in Indianapolis. This petition proposes to rezonate 104 acres from the DA District to the CS District to provide for approximately 320 multifamily residential units on approximately 22 acres within the northern half of the site, and I-1 and C-4 uses on the approximately 82 acres of the remainder of the site, located at 8516 and 8600 South Arlington Avenue and 5624 East County Line Road in Franklin Township, District 25. Written objections that are filed with the Clerk of the Council shall be heard at such time, or the hearing may be continued as found necessary by the Council. This concludes the announcement of a public hearing.
The proposals will pass into law. Does anyone wish to call down any of the proposals for reconsideration? All right, seeing none, the proposals will pass into law. The next item on our agenda is Special Orders Public Hearing. The agenda was previously amended to add Proposals 179 through 181, 2020, as the first items of business for action in the public hearing this evening. And Proposal 179 approves an additional appropriation in the 2020 City Non-Departmental Budget in characters one, two, and three from the Coronavirus Relief Fund totaling $76,71,363 to fund response efforts addressing the COVID-19 pandemic, including public health measures like testing and tracing and the provision of face coverings to residents, programs to combat the secondary economic effects of the pandemic faced by Marion County residents, small businesses, and nonprofits, expenses incurred or that will be incurred by city-county government in response to the pandemic, and reimbursement of eligible expenses incurred by eligible political subdivisions within Marion County. I, I do believe that there is a motion to divide the question. Councilar Barth, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. There are some components to this proposal that fund nonprofit organizations. As many counselors wear different hats as leaders of nonprofit organizations in one form or another, I have a motion to split the question. So therefore, Mr. President, I move to divide the question on the adoption of Proposal 179, 2020 by voting on Section Three separately as follows. Question one, the appropriation of $67,765,363 in Section Three for the City Non-Departmental 2020 Budget Coronavirus Relief Fund in Chapter Three. And question two, the balance of Proposal Number 179, 2020.
Second.
Is there a second? I'm sorry, did I hear a second?
Second.
Very good. So the motion's improperly moved and seconded to divide the question. So Madam Clerk, we will now proceed to the roll call for our vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilor Adamson.
Council Adamson is aye.
Council Anay.
Council Anay, aye.
Council Barth.
Barth, aye.
Council Boots.
Boots, aye.
Council Carlino.
Council Carlino, aye.
Council Dilk.
Council Dilk, aye.
Council Ethan Evans.
Council Ethan Evans, aye.
Council Jared Evans.
Council Jared Evans, aye.
Council Graves.
Council Graves, aye.
Council Gray.
Council Gray, aye.
Council Hart.
Hart, aye.
Council Holliday.
Aye.
Council Jackson.
Council Jackson, aye.
Council Johnson.
Council Johnson, aye.
Council Jones.
Council Jones, aye.
Council Lewis.
Council Lewis, aye.
Council Mascary.
Council Mascary, aye.
Council McCormick.
Aye.
Council Maury.
Council Maury, aye.
Council Oliver.
Oliver, aye.
Council Osalee.
Council Osalee, aye.
Council Potts.
Council Potts, aye.
Council Ray.
Council Ray, aye.
Council Robinson.
Council Robinson, aye.
Mr. President, the vote is unanimous.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So the motion carries to divide the question. We are under a public hearing. So Madam Clerk, are there any public comments that have been received for, for Proposal Number 179?
So I guess this proposal comes from Vico Behringer. It says, "I really need help with my DPW claim." I'm sorry, this doesn't, it's labeled for 179, but it doesn't appear to be related to the, the subject, I mean, to the proposal. I could continue to read if you'd like, but it does not appear to, to be related to the proposal.
I believe that was the letter to the governor. I don't, I'm not sure that it pertains to Proposal 179 as closely as we would like. Do we have any other letters or comments on Proposal 179?
I do not see any additional for 179.
Okay, very good. So, councilors, are there any comments on question one? And just to refresh, question one is the appropriation of $67,765,363 in Section Three for the City Non-Departmental 2020 Budget in character three. All right, seeing no questions on question one, we'll proceed now to a roll call vote on question one. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilor Adamson.
Council Adamson, aye.
Council Anay.
Council Anay, aye.
Council Barth.
And I am the board chair for Indy Reads, which is one of the potential recipients of dollars from this fund, so I ask to be excused from this vote.
Very good. Thank you, counselor.
Council Boots.
Mr. President, I am on the board for the Advancement Center of Washington Township, as well as the board for the Benford Realignment and Growth Organization. So on those grounds, I do ask to be excused from voting for this.
Thank you very much, Council Boots.
Council Brown.
Council Brown also needs to abstain as the executive director of Rebuilding Together.
Council Carlino.
Thank you, Council Brown.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I too am going to abstain as the MSD of Wayne Township is my employer and eligible to receive the funding. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Carlino.
Council Dilk.
Council Dilk, aye.
Council Ethan Evans.
Council Ethan Evans, aye.
Council Jared Evans.
Council Jared Evans, aye.
Council Graves.
Council Graves, aye.
Council Gray.
Council Gray, aye.
Council Hart.
Hart, aye.
Council Holliday.
Aye.
Council Jackson.
Want a clarification, Mr. President? Question one, is that for the reimbursement or is that question two? On the split.
I will ask CFO Ho to provide you a clarity on that. CFO Ho, please.
Yep, Chairman, it is for count, question one. So these dollars are the, the money that could go into character three and would be benefiting some nonprofits across the city.
I ask to abstain as related to a not-for-profit. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Jackson.
Council Johnson.
Mr. President, as chief executive of a local nonprofit, I ask you to abstain from this vote.
Thank you, Council Johnson.
Council Jones.
Council Jones, aye.
Council Lewis.
Mr. President, I have the honor of serving as a CEO of a nonprofit here locally, and so I ask to be excused.
Thank you, Council Lewis.
Council Mascary.
Council Mascary, aye.
Council McCormick.
Council McCormick, aye.
Council Maury.
Aye.
Council Oliver.
Council Oliver, aye.
Council Osalee.
Council Osalee, aye.
Council Potts.
Council Potts, aye.
Council Ray.
Council Ray, aye.
Council Robinson.
Mr. President, I too work with a not-for-profit. Ask to be excused from this vote, please.
Very good. Thank you, Council Robinson.
Mr. President, that is, that would be, sorry, 17, aye, and looks like eight abstentions?
All right, very good. And I know that the most, the motion required 17 for adoption, so thank you very much, Madam, Madam Clerk. Comments from councilors on question number two, which is the balance proposal number 179, I believe that that is $8.2 million. All right, hearing none, we will now proceed to a roll call vote on question number two. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilor Adamson.
Council Adamson, aye.
Council Anay.
Council Anay, aye.
Council Barth.
Barth, aye.
Council Boots.
Boots, aye.
Council Brown.
Brown, aye.
Council Carlino.
Council Carlino, aye.
Council Dilk.
Council Dilk, aye.
Council Ethan Evans.
Council Ethan Evans, aye.
Council Jared Evans.
Council Jared Evans, aye.
Council Graves.
Council Graves, aye.
Council Gray.
Council Gray, aye.
Council Hart.
Hart, aye.
Council Holliday.
Holliday, aye.
Council Jackson.
Want a clarification, so this is not related to a not-for-profit on question two, correct?
Correct.
Aye, Council Jackson, aye.
Council Johnson.
Council Johnson, aye.
Council Jones.
Council Jones, aye.
Council Lewis.
Council Lewis, aye.
Council Mascary.
Council Mascary, aye.
Council McCormick.
Council McCormick, aye.
Council Maury.
Council Maury, aye.
Council Oliver.
Oliver, aye.
Council Osalee.
Council Osalee, aye.
Council Potts.
Council Potts, aye.
Council Ray.
Council Ray, aye.
Council Robinson.
Council Robinson, aye.
Mr. President, the vote is unanimous.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is Proposal Number 180, which approves an additional appropriation totaling $8,448,000 in the 2020 City and County Non-Departmental Budgets in the Federal Grants Fund, Consolidated County General Fund, and the County General Fund in characters one, two, three, and four for COVID-19-related expenses eligible for reimbursement from the Federal Emergency Management Agency, or FEMA, Public Assistance Award. Madam Clerk, is there anyone who has written in any questions that speak to Proposal Number 180? If so, could you please read them all?
Mr. President, I do not have any questions related to Proposal Number 180.
All right, very good. Are there comments from councilors? And if we have any questions, I know that we have someone from the administration who can help clarify. Comments from councilors on Proposal Number 180? Council Ethan Evans.
Thank you, Mr. President. I said a clarification question, so you said it would be eligible for reimbursement. Is there a timetable on when the, the funds would be eligible for reimbursement? And is there any specific percentage of those that's eligible, or is it the totality? So we would have to make use of all the funds for those specific purposes in the immediacy?
All right, I do see Deputy Mayor Thomas Cook, Chief of Staff. I'll, I'll turn it over to him, and perhaps he can answer or direct it to someone.
I appreciate the question, Counselor. Thank you, Mr. President. The, the short answer to the reimbursement is that under the current FEMA guidelines that we possess, which are possibly subject to change, we would be reimbursed for 75% of FEMA-eligible expenses that would be possible under this appropriation. As to the timeline, with permission, Mr. President, I might see if Controller Ken Clark might be able to provide some clarity if, if we have a timeline and we provide it at this point.
Very good. Please, please proceed.
Hello, Mr. President, councilors. The current timeline on FEMA eligibility has not been laid out in terms of how long we have for reimbursement. Because the emergency is still open, there's not been a determined period in which we'd have to get the reimbursement. We, of course, are immediately filling out all the paperwork required, including a state, there's state paperwork that we've filled out with the Department of Homeland Security at the state level to make sure that we are eligible for all these dollars. The total right now on the dollars that would be eligible out of city-county funding of about 25% is 1.862 million, as is laid out in the fiscal. But we will likely get those reimbursements by, or submit the reimbursements before the end of the year. But we will likely get those reimbursements by, or submit the reimbursements before the end of the year.
Thank you. And I just, um, for clarification, do you mean emergency ongoing is in the state emergency or federally declared emergency?
Ultimately, all of this rules, um, and really, I'm not the expert on the different emergency levels, but I'll say the state has to approve of our emergency level here locally, and so, um, and then that goes to the federal government. But ultimately FEMA is a federal agency, and so their determination is what would drive that.
Thank you.
Very good. Are there additional questions from counselors? All right, um, seeing, seeing none.
Mr. Mr. President, I just want to make a point of order. I believe there, there still hasn't, there hasn't been a motion and a second for this proposal.
May I get a, may I get a motion for proposal number 180?
I would move that.
Second.
All right, it's been properly moved and seconded. Um, we will now proceed to a roll call for our vote, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Adamson.
Counselor Adamson, aye.
Counsel Anay.
Counsel Anay, aye.
Counsel Barth.
Barth, aye.
Counsel Boots.
Boots, aye.
Counsel Brown.
Counsel Brown, aye.
Counsel Carlina.
Counsel Carlina, aye.
Counsel Dilk.
Counsel Dilk, aye.
Counsel Ethan Evans.
Counsel Ethan Evans, aye.
Counsel Jared Evans.
Counsel Jared Evans, aye.
Counsel Graves.
Counsel Graves, aye.
Counsel Gray.
Counsel Gray, aye.
Counsel Hart.
Hart, aye.
Counsel Holliday.
Holliday, aye, thank you.
Counsel Jackson.
Counsel Jackson, aye.
Counsel Johnson.
Counsel Johnson, aye.
Counsel Jones.
Counsel Jones, aye.
Counsel Lewis.
Lewis, aye.
Counsel Mescary.
Counsel Mescary, aye.
Counsel McCormick.
Counsel McCormick, aye.
Counsel Maury.
Counsel Maury, aye.
Counsel Oliver.
Counsel Oliver, aye.
Counsel Osalee.
Counsel Osalee, aye.
Counsel Potts.
Counselor Potts, aye.
Counselor Ray.
Counselor Ray, aye.
Counsel Robinson.
Counsel Robinson, aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. The vote is unanimous.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, the next item, uh, on our agenda, proposal number 181, approved an additional appropriation totaling $3,954,034 in the 2020 budget of the Consolidated City of Indianapolis and Marion County in the federal grants fund in characters one, two, three, and four for COVID-19-related expenses eligible for reimbursement from the Supplemental Justice Assistance Grant Award. Is there, um, anyone who has written in any questions today on proposal number 181, Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, we do not have any questions on proposal 181.
All right, very good. Fellow counselors, is there a motion on proposal number 181?
Mr. President, I would move for the passage of proposal 181.
Second.
I'll have a second.
Very good, it's improperly moved and seconded. Are there comments from counselors? All right, very good. Seeing none, then we'll proceed to a roll call for our vote. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counsel Adamson.
Counsel Adamson, aye.
Counsel Anay.
Counsel Anay, aye.
Counsel Barth.
Barth, aye.
Counsel Boots.
Boots, aye.
Counsel Brown.
Counsel Brown, aye.
Counsel Carlina.
Counsel Carlina, aye.
Counsel Dilk.
Counsel Dilk, aye.
Counsel Ethan Evans.
Counsel Ethan Evans, aye.
Counsel Jared Evans. Counsel Jared Evans. Counsel Graves.
Counsel Graves, aye.
Counsel Holliday, I'm sorry, Counsel Gray.
That's okay, forgive me. Counsel Gray, aye.
Counsel Hart.
Hart, aye.
Counsel Holliday.
Aye.
Counsel Jackson.
Counsel Jackson, aye.
Counsel Johnson.
Counsel Johnson, aye.
Counsel Jones.
Counsel Jones, aye.
Counsel Lewis.
Counsel Lewis, aye.
Counsel Mescary.
Counsel Mescary, aye.
Counsel McCormick.
McCormick, aye.
Counsel Maury.
Counsel Maury, aye.
Counsel Oliver.
Oliver, aye.
Counsel Osalee.
Counsel Osalee, aye.
Counsel Potts.
Counsel Potts, aye.
Counsel Ray.
Counsel Ray, aye.
Counsel Robinson.
Counsel Robinson, aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. The vote is 24 to 0.
Chairman Johnson? Yes, um, proposal number 144 referred to Admin and Finance Committee. Love to hear from you.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Proposal number 144, 2020, approves an additional appropriation totaling $500,000 in the 2020 budget of the Office of Corporation Counsel, Consolidated County General Fund in Character III for the purpose of litigation that arose after the passage of the 2020 budget. Donnie Morgan, Office of Corporation Counsel, stated that this lawsuit was filed in November of 2019 after the 2020 budget was passed, so that OCC did not have adequate funds in their budget for this lawsuit, which they did not foresee. Mr. Morgan said that when this lawsuit came forward, OCC hired outside counsel, and they've been billing them since December 2019. Those bills to date total somewhere between $200,000 and $250,000. So that the proposal asks for $500,000 in hopes that they would not have to come back to the council to ask for more, so that it should get them through the end of this year. Counsel Jackson moved, seconded by Counsel Graves, to send proposal number 144 to the full council with a due pass recommendation. Motion carried by a vote of 10 to 0 with one abstention from Counsel Barth. Mr. President, I so move.
Second.
Uh, thank you very much. The motion is improperly moved and seconded. Are there comments from counselors? All right, seeing none, is there anyone who has written in, Madam Clerk, questions that speak to proposal number 144?
Mr. President, we do not have any questions or comments for proposal 144.
All right, very good. Fellow counselors, um, if no questions, then we'll proceed to roll call for our vote. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counsel Adamson.
Counsel Adamson, aye.
Counsel Anay.
Counsel Anay, aye.
Counsel Barth.
Uh, Mr. President, in an abundance of caution, because my wife is employed at the law firm at hand, I would ask to be excused from this vote as well.
Counsel Boots.
Counsel Boots, aye.
Counsel Brown.
Counsel Brown, aye.
Counsel Carlina.
Counsel Carlina, aye.
Counsel Dilk.
Counsel Dilk, aye.
Counsel Ethan Evans.
Counsel Ethan Evans, aye.
Counsel Jared Evans. Counsel Graves.
Counsel Graves, aye.
Counsel Gray.
Counsel Gray. Aye.
Counsel Hart.
Hart, aye.
Counsel Holliday.
Nay.
Counsel Jackson.
Counsel Jackson, aye.
Counsel Johnson.
Counsel Johnson, aye.
Counsel Jones.
Counsel Jones, aye.
Counsel Lewis.
Lewis, aye.
Counsel Mescary.
Counsel Mescary, aye.
Counsel McCormick.
McCormick, aye.
Counsel Maury.
Maury, aye.
Counsel Oliver.
Oliver, aye.
Counsel Osalee.
Counsel Osalee, aye.
Counsel Potts.
Counselor Potts, aye.
Counsel Ray.
Counsel Ray, aye.
Counsel Robinson.
Counsel Robinson, aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have 22 aye, one nay, one abstention.
Motion carries. Uh, thank you very much, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 145, referred to Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 145 approves additional appropriation totaling $8,626,000 in the 2020 budget of the Department of Metropolitan Development Federal Grants Fund in Character III. The additional appropriations are supported through the award of the federal funds by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development as authorized by the Coronavirus Aid Relief Economic Security Act, the CARES Act, for ongoing prevention and response to the coronavirus pandemic. Director Emily Mack and Jenny Foltz, Administrator of the Economic Development Department of Metropolitan Development, gave a brief presentation making the following key points. The CARES Act was passed by Congress and signed into law on March 27th, 2020. DMB's Community Investments Team will be receiving a total of $8,626,000 in federal CARES Act funding. The CDBG Community Development Block Grant will receive roughly $5,601,000. The ESG, the Emergency Solution Grant, will receive approximately $2,792,000. And HOPWA, Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS, will receive $232,000. The proposal passed out of committee by a vote of 11 to 2, with Counselors Brown and Jackson abstaining. Mr. President, I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, very good. Uh, thank you, counselors. The motion is improperly moved and seconded. Are there comments from counselors? Counsel Potts.
Thank you, Mr. President. Very briefly, I know we go through a lot of these resolutions very quickly, but, uh, as I mentioned in our MEDC Committee meeting when we discussed this resolution, I wanted to reemphasize that the work that was put into this that is going to allow so many families to have food on the table, to remain in their homes and to have their bills paid, is really significant. And, uh, I, I think we are a debt of gratitude to the department for putting this program together and making sure our neighbors have the resources they need. So thank you, Director Mack and everyone, thank you.
Very good. Very good. Um, Director Mack is with us, um, this evening. If anyone has any questions for her, welcome, Director Mack.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Um, Madam Clerk, has anyone written in any questions that speak to proposal number 145?
Mr. President, we do not have any questions for proposal 145.
All right, um, counselors, anything, any questions whatsoever?
Counsel Jackson has one.
Please.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I just have to abstain, but I do wholeheartedly support proposal 145. I think is needed, uh, right now in the time that we're in as a relief. Um, during COVID-19, I think these additional funds, uh, will support, especially in the housing area and the relief and aid in other areas, and, um, I would urge my colleagues to support it.
Thank you, Counselor. Um, if there are no additional comments, then we will proceed to roll call for our vote. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counsel Adamson.
Counsel Adamson, aye.
Counsel Anay.
Counsel Anay, aye.
Counsel Barth.
Barth, aye.
Counsel Boots.
Counsel Boots, aye.
Counsel Brown.
Uh, I, I'm sorry, Mr. President, I need to abstain as my nonprofit works in housing.
Very good. So thank you, Counsel Brown.
Counsel Carlina.
Counsel Carlina, aye.
Counsel Dilk.
Counsel Dilk, aye.
Counsel Ethan Evans.
Counsel Ethan Evans, aye.
Counsel Jared Evans.
Counsel Jared Evans, aye.
Counsel Graves.
Counsel Graves, aye.
Counsel Gray.
Counsel Gray, aye.
Counsel Hart.
Hart, aye.
Counsel Holliday.
Holliday, aye.
Counsel Jackson.
Mr. President, I need to abstain as my organization, uh, is related in this field.
Very good. Thank you, Counsel Jackson.
Counsel Johnson.
Counsel Johnson, aye.
Counsel Jones.
Counsel Jones, aye.
Counsel Lewis.
Lewis, aye.
Counsel Mescary.
Counsel Mescary, aye.
Counsel McCormick.
Counsel McCormick, aye.
Counsel Maury.
Counsel Maury, aye.
Counsel Oliver.
Aye.
Counsel Osalee.
Counsel Osalee, aye.
Counsel Potts.
Counsel Potts, aye.
Counsel Ray.
Counsel Ray, aye.
Counsel Robinson.
Counsel Robinson, aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. That would be 23 aye, two abstentions.
Uh, thank you very much, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 159, referred to Rules and Public Policy Committee. Chairman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 159, 2020, renews the Marion County Public Health Department's Safe Syringe Access and Support Program by adopting the declarations of the Director of the Marion County Public Health Department and approving the Safe Syringe Access and Support Program. President Osalee introduced Ms. Wine Trout, Program Manager, Safe Syringe Access and Support for the Marion County Public Health Department for a brief presentation. Ms. Wine Trout gave a summary of the program's progress in its first year. Summary included updates on the Safe Syringe Access and Support utilization, target population, the program team, collaborations, connections to substance use disorder treatment, program challenges, operations during COVID-19, and program funding to date. Counsel Gray moved, seconded by Counsel Holliday, to send proposal number 159, 2020 to the full council with a due pass recommendation. Motion carried by a vote of 7 to 0. Mr. President, I so move.
Uh, thank you, Counselor. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, the motion's improperly moved and seconded. Uh, with us tonight is actually Ms. Wine Trout, um, the Program Manager for Safe Syringe Access and Support Program. So if there are any questions, she is present. Um, are there comments or questions from counselors? Counsel Brown.
Um, I just want to make a comment. In my past life, I spent three and a half years working as an HIV STD educator in northeast Indiana. And I can tell you things that, some of the biggest things that can decrease risk is things like the syringe exchange, and I'm very happy to support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Counsel Barth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Similarly, um, I was, uh, in a former life, as Thank you, Mr. President. Si- similarly, um, I was, uh, in a former life, uh, as a leader at a Medicaid health plan, I was involved in the interventions put in place, um, in Scott County. And I know that, uh, this, uh, intervention is meaningful and material and, uh, makes a difference in people's lives. So, uh, like Counselor Brown, I am very supportive.
Very good. Uh, Counselor Jackson. Uh, Counselor Jackson, I believe you're muted.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, like the first syringe program, um, Dr. Kane came to me and had an hour and a half long meeting when she was trying to push that first one. I was very supportive of that one. I'm very supportive of this one. And I'd like to be at as the co-sponsor.
Very good. Thank you. Um, are there additional questions? If so, please speak out because I, I don't see everyone, uh, on my screen. I don't want to miss anyone. All right.
Counsel Oliver.
Counsel Oliver, please.
Yeah, under support program, can you tell me what that's about?
Yes. Um, Ms. Wine Trout, would you be able to answer Counsel Oliver's question?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, so the Safe Syringe Access and Support Program is a harm reduction initiative that's aimed at helping people who inject drugs have access to safe injection supplies. It's the most effective way to prevent the spread of HIV and hepatitis C through injection drug use. In addition to that very core service, we also offer free wraparound services to our clients where we get them tested for HIV and hepatitis C. We immunize them against things like hepatitis A and influenza, which have been very helpful at, at addressing other epidemics in this community. We're also staffed full-time by peer recovery coaches, which are individuals with lived experience with drug use, that are help, able to help mentor our clients towards recovery as they see fit. Uh, we also provide naloxone for overdose reversals. And in the past year, we've helped, uh, reverse over a hundred and twelve overdoses to save those lives.
Question, Mr. President. Yeah, on the public safety, are they involved, uh, if there's an overdose, uh, what happens next is the person that are in the company of one that is overdosed or has, uh, what happened to that person? Are they Good Samaritan? They just, what's the process when they come upon someone, uh, to give them out a needle, uh, a syringe, or have overdose? Is public safety involved?
So, we collaborate with Indianapolis Metropolitan Police Department to, um, to help them, um, interact with our clients. So, under Indiana law, um, there is still unlawful possession of a syringe, but we've provided education to every single police officer in Marion County, uh, in Marion County to help them exercise discretion in this, in this effort. In the education that we provided them, we actually did a survey, and eighty-two percent of them completely supported this program and recognized that, uh, this was an effective way to prevent infectious disease in our community. When it comes to overdoses, there is a Good Samaritan law in Indiana. Uh, it protects the person who calls 911 and administers naloxone. So, um, part of the requirement for that is that you, um, have to call 911 if you administer the naloxone. Naloxone is also administered by our first responders, both police, fire, and EMS.
Thank you very much.
Counsel Oliver. Are there any additional questions from, from Counselors? All right, um, seeing none. Madam Clerk, has anyone written any questions that speak to proposal number one, uh, fifty-nine?
Mr. President, we do not have any questions or comments for proposal one fifty-nine.
All right, very good. Um, if there are no additional questions, then we'll proceed to roll call for our vote. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Adamson.
Counselor Adamson, aye.
Counselor Anay.
Counselor Anay, aye.
Counselor Boots.
Boots, aye.
Counselor Barth.
Barth, aye.
Counselor Brown.
Counselor Brown, aye.
Counselor Carlino.
Carlino, aye.
Counselor Dilk.
Counselor Dilk, aye.
Counselor Ethan Evans.
Counselor Ethan Evans, aye.
Counselor Jared Evans.
Counselor Jared Evans, aye.
Counselor Graves.
Counselor Graves, aye.
Counselor Gray.
Counselor Gray, aye.
Counselor Hart.
Hart, aye.
Counselor Holliday.
Aye.
Counselor Jackson.
Counselor Jackson, aye. Can you please make sure I'm down as a co-sponsor?
I do have you down as a co-sponsor.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Counselor Johnson.
Counselor Johnson, aye.
Counselor Jones.
Counselor Jones, aye.
Counselor Lewis.
Counselor Lewis, aye.
Counselor Mascary.
Counselor Mascary, aye.
Counselor McCormick.
McCormick, aye.
Counselor Maury.
Counselor Maury, aye.
Counselor Oliver.
Counsel Oliver, aye.
Counselor Osalee.
Counselor Osalee, aye.
Counselor Potts.
Counselor Potts, aye.
Counselor Ray.
Counselor Ray, aye.
Counselor Robinson.
Counselor Robinson, aye.
Mr. President, the vote is unanimous.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, there is no business under special orders on finished business. So, the next item on our agenda is special orders final adoption. Uh, the agenda, as you recall, was previously amended to add proposal number, uh, one sixty-two, 2020, as the first item of business for action, uh, under final adoption this evening. So, proposal number one sixty-two, amends Article Five, Section Five Point Zero Two G of Fiscal Ordinance Number Twenty, 2019, which is the 2020 City County Council Budget, uh, regarding the maximum number of authorized employees for Marion County Community Corrections. Uh, we will have, we have with us this evening, um, Community Corrections Director Tyler Boma. But before we proceed, I would ask my fellow Counselors for a motion.
Mr. President, I would move that we send proposal one sixty-two to the full council with a due pass recommendation.
Is there a second?
Second.
You're not second.
All right, very good. And I just see, um, that in addition to, uh, Community Corrections, uh, Director Tyler Boma, we have, uh, Community Corrections CFO, um, Ms. Natrina Devoe. So, uh, are there Counselors who have any questions on proposal number one sixty-two?
Mr. President.
Please.
Thank you, sir. Can someone explain what is the current number? What is the number you want to what you're wanting to increase? The justification for it and how they'll be funded?
Tyler, you're muted.
Director Boma, thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. So, to speak to each of those points, we currently have two hundred employees, and we are asking to add twelve additional positions in the case management area, specifically so that we can pull back into our agency roughly a thousand cases that for several years have been managed by our electronic monitoring vendor, uh, at no cost to the county, but through the collection of user fees. On May fourth, we received a letter from the Marion County Reentry Coalition, an organization that does great work for our local citizens that are criminally justice-involved. And they specifically asked that as a, um, population that is severely impacted by the, the COVID pandemic, uh, that we could assist them at Community Corrections by waiving their fees for a three-month period to allow them some economic stability through this in a recovery period. When we looked at how we could do that, the only way we could do it under the current model would be to pay the vendor, basically let a new contract that would use county money to pay the vendor for those case management services of roughly a thousand clients. Uh, when we did our research on it, we discovered that it was financially more advantageous for us to not pay those case management fees, but rather hire those case managers, uh, from the vendor, bring them into our organization, bring those cases back into, under our roof, and supervise those cases, thereby allowing us to suspend those fees.
Okay, so is this intended to be temporary until such time as the pandemic is resolved? Or a permanent move since you were contracting with a vendor that?
So, the fee suspension that was asked for by the Marion County Reentry Coalition is a temporary measure for three months. The movement of those cases back into our organization from the vendor is intended to be a permanent move. It's been something that has been discussed for quite some time, uh, as, as a means to alleviate using that unfunded contract to supervise those cases through the collect, independent collection of the fees by the vendor. Uh, we, what we do is we hope to provide a more uniform ver- version of case management by, by the permanent movement of those case managers. That process had only ever intended to be a temporary move, uh, that quite honestly grew because it was beneficial at the time. But this will allow us to better supervise those cases long-term. And I want to add that we're not asking for any additional money to fund these, these case management positions. We've identified that we can handle it for the rest of this year through our budget.
And then subsequent years through user funds or fees through the budget as well, I presume?
I'm sorry, Counselor?
Then in future years, similarly, you can fund it through user fees?
That is what we, that is what we hope to do.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President.
And, and I do, I also should add one thing. This is not canceling the funded contracts with that vendor. Those will continue. It is just the unfunded contract that, that this will replace.
Very good. Thank you, Director. Uh, additional, uh, questions on proposal number one sixty-two? All right, uh, seeing none, then, we will proceed to roll call for our vote. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Adamson.
Counselor Adamson, aye.
Counselor Anay.
Counselor Anay, aye.
Counselor Barth.
Barth, aye.
Counselor Boots.
Boots, aye.
Counselor Brown.
Counselor Brown, aye.
Counselor Carlino.
Carlino, aye.
Counselor Dilk.
Counselor Dilk, aye.
Counselor Ethan Evans.
Counselor Ethan Evans, aye.
Counselor Jared Evans.
Counsel Jared Evans, aye.
Counselor Graves.
Counselor Graves, aye.
Counselor Gray.
Counselor Gray, aye.
Counselor Hart.
Hart, aye.
Counselor Holliday.
Aye, thank you.
Counselor Jackson.
Counselor Jackson, aye.
Counselor Johnson.
Counselor Johnson, aye.
Counselor Jones.
Counselor Jones, aye.
Counselor Lewis.
Counselor Lewis, aye.
Counselor Mascary.
Mascary, aye.
Counselor McCormick.
Counselor McCormick, aye.
Counselor Maury.
Maury, aye.
Counselor Oliver.
Oliver, aye.
Counselor Osalee.
Counselor Osalee, aye.
Counselor Potts.
Counselor Potts, aye.
Counselor Ray.
Counselor Ray, aye.
Counselor Robinson.
Counselor Robinson, aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. The vote is unanimous.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is proposal number eighty-six, referred to Parks and Recreation Committee. Chairman Oliver.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, on May the twenty-first, the Parks and Recreation Committee met to reach, to determine the need to lease approximately twenty-three thousand five hundred square feet at fourteen twenty-six Broad Ripple Avenue for use by the Department of Parks and Recreation. Mr. President, on the twenty-first of May, it passed with a due pass of eight to zero. And, Mr. President, I so move. Before we vote, I would certainly like to hear some comments and narrative from the Counsel out there, Mr. Keith Potts.
Thank you. May I, Mr. President?
Yes, but, uh, if, before we do, uh, can I get a second?
Second.
All right. All right, Counsel Potts, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, it's my honor to co-sponsor proposal number eighty-six with Chairman Oliver tonight. Just a few very brief comments. Um, thank you to Parks Director Linda Broadfoot, who I think is still, uh, with us here tonight at this meeting, and all of our Indy Parks staff for all of your incredible work for our city, whether that's, um, the regular community programming that you all do, providing meals during a pandemic, as you have been doing, or your hard work on this project. And I know, uh, specific to this project, past and current staff at the Parks Department have called it one of the most exciting projects in Indy Parks history. The Broad Ripple Park Family Center is in, uh, real need of improvement. And so, this public-private partnership will allow the Parks Department to build a much-needed new state-of-the-art facility within which approximately seventy percent of the square footage will be occupied by Indy Parks and just approximately thirty percent of the square footage by the partner, Community Health. And this project, uh, included a series of community listening sessions. Many of us in this body have also heard from our neighbors and constituents in recent days. And I'm very glad to report that the development team has incorporated much of the community feedback into their plans. And I look forward to continuing to engage with our community and the development team, uh, in those conversations throughout this process. At the Indy Parks Board hearing of this resolution, it was really great to hear Mr. Joseph Wins pontificate on the, the future of parks and praise this project specifically for its forward-thinking. This project is going to allow for expanded programming at Broad Ripple Park, including programming aimed toward fulfilling the Indy Parks mission statement by providing places and experiences that inspire healthy living. And at this council's, uh, May twenty-first Park Committee meeting, uh, Director Broadfoot and her team delivered a very detailed and thoughtful presentation, took Counselor questions. And I'd like to share a very brief portion of a letter that our committee received. Mr. Tom McCain, the president of the Friends of Broad Ripple Park, wrote a letter that was read at that, uh, Parks Committee meeting, which said, "The Family Center is an investment in the future of the city of Indianapolis, and the Friends of Broad Ripple Park ask and encourage the support of this outstanding addition to our park system." And one final thought, at that same May twenty-first, twenty-first Parks Committee meeting, even, uh, in such a time as this, this resolution passed through our Parks Committee in a unanimous and bipartisan manner. Uh, this is going to be a great thing for our community, and I really hope all of my colleagues join me in supporting proposal number eighty-six tonight. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Uh, any additional comments from fellow Counselors? All right, seeing none, um, then we will proceed, um, to a roll call vote. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Adamson.
Counselor Adamson, aye.
Counselor Anay.
Anay, aye.
Counselor Barth.
Barth, aye.
Counselor Boots.
Boots, aye.
Counselor Brown.
Counselor Brown, aye.
Counsel, Counselor Carlino. Counselor Dilk.
Counselor Dilk, aye.
Counselor Ethan Evans.
Counselor Ethan Evans, aye.
Counselor Jared Evans.
Counselor Jared Evans, aye.
Counselor Graves.
Uh, Graves, aye.
Counselor Gray.
Counselor Gray abstained due to a conflict.
Thank you, Counselor Gray.
Counselor Hart.
Hart, aye.
Counselor Holliday.
Aye, thank you.
Counselor Jackson.
Counselor Jackson, aye.
Counselor Johnson.
Counselor Johnson, aye.
Counselor Jones.
Counselor Jones, aye.
Counselor Lewis.
Counselor Lewis, aye.
Counselor Mascary.
Mascary, aye.
Counselor McCormick.
McCormick, aye.
Counselor Maury.
Counselor Maury, aye.
Counsel Maury, aye.
Counsel Oliver?
Oliver, aye.
Counsel Osalee?
Counsel Osalee, aye.
Counsel Potts?
Counselor Potts, aye.
Counsel Ray?
Counsel Ray, aye.
Counsel Robinson?
Counsel Robinson, aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. That is, it will be 24, aye, and one exception.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda, proposal number 146, referred to Public Works Committee. Chairman Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. With consent, I'd like to hear proposals number 146 through 150 together.
Consent.
Consent.
Thank you, counselors. Proposal number 146 establishes the interest in purchasing specified land in the 2,600 block of Southeastern Avenue owned by J.L. Fox for the construction of a public works project. Proposal number 147 establishes the interest in purchasing specified lands in the 2,600 block of Southeastern Avenue owned by C. Peters for the construction of a public works project. Proposal number 148 establishes the interest in purchasing specified land in the 2,600 block of Southeastern Avenue owned by Peters Property Management for the construction of a public works project. Proposal number 149 establishes the interest in purchasing specified land in the 2,600 block of Southeastern Avenue owned by K. Stroup for the construction of a public works project. Proposal number 150 establishes the interest in purchasing a specified land in the 2,600 block of Southeastern Avenue owned by T. Wadsworth for the construction of a public works project. Oliver moved, seconded by Counsel Boots, to send proposals number 146 to 150 to the full council with a due pass recommendation. And that motion carried by a vote of 11 to 0, and I so moved.
The motion is properly moved, the motion is properly moved and seconded. Are there any additional comments from counselors?
I don't, I, oh, sorry. Thank you, Mr. President. I know this probably been said, and I had looked at it before, but just one clarification question. What, if you can say it, what is that construction project again?
This is a construction project that is in the Southeastern English and Rural Avenue, widening project of putting a roundabout in there for the expansion of, for traffic and flow into the CJC down at Twin Air.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any additional questions? We have with us Director Dan Parker, if there are questions, fellow counselors? All right, very good. Madam Clerk, we'll proceed to a roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counsel Adamson?
Counsel Adamson, aye.
Counsel Anay?
Anay, aye.
Counsel Barth?
Barth, aye.
Counsel Boots?
Counsel Boots, aye.
Counsel Brown?
Brown, aye.
Counsel Carlino?
Carlino, aye.
Counsel Dilk?
Counsel Dilk, aye.
Counsel Ethan Evans?
Counsel Ethan Evans, aye.
Counsel Jared Evans?
Counsel Jared Evans, aye.
Counsel Graves?
Counsel Graves, aye.
Counsel Gray?
Counsel Gray, aye.
Counsel Hart?
Hart, aye.
Counsel Holiday?
Holiday, aye, thank you.
Counsel Jackson?
Counsel Jackson, aye.
Counsel Johnson?
Counsel Johnson, aye.
Counsel Jones?
Counsel Jones, aye.
Counsel Lewis?
Counsel Lewis, aye.
Counsel Mascary?
Mascary, aye.
Counsel McCormick?
McCormick, aye.
Counsel Maury?
Counsel Maury, aye.
Counsel Oliver?
Counsel Oliver, aye.
Counsel Osalee?
Counsel Osalee, aye.
Counsel Potts?
Counselor Potts, aye.
Counsel Ray?
Counsel Ray, aye.
Counsel Robinson?
Counsel Robinson, aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. The votes are unanimous.
Thank you. Chairman Adamson?
Yes, sir.
So, we have gone from proposal number 146 through 150. The next item on our agenda, proposal number 151, referred to Public Works Committee Chairman Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. With consent, I would like to hear proposals number 151 through 156 together.
Consent.
Thank you. Proposal number 151 authorizes parking restrictions along the south side of 56th Street, west of Meridian Street in District 2. Proposal number 152 removes parking restrictions on Chelsea Road between Lynnhurst Drive and Dunlop Drive in District 22. Proposal number 153 authorizes intersection controls at Kellum and Brandler Drives in District 20. Proposal number 154 authorizes intersection controls at 30th Street and Tyrone Drive in Districts 8 and 11. Proposal number 155 authorizes parking restrictions on Claridan Road from 42nd to 44th Street in District 7. Proposal number 156 authorizes speed limit reduction to 25 miles per hour in the Stein, Steinmeier, Lenmore, and Highgate subdivisions in District 3. Boots moved, seconded by Counsel Gray, to send proposals 151 through 156 to the full council with a due pass recommendation. And that motion carried by a vote of 11 to 0, and I so moved.
Second.
Very good. The motion is properly moved and seconded. Are there comments from counselors? Counsel Boots?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a point of clarification. I assume, because I live in the Steinmeier subdivision, that I should designate that any vote I make, I abstain from proposal 156 because that is, even though my introduction, I'm also very self-interested because I live in that area.
I will ask Counsel, Counsel Kim, to weigh in on that.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't believe it's necessary to abstain. It wouldn't necessarily be a conflict of interest presented to our local code.
Does that address your question, Counsel Boots?
I'm sorry, I barely heard her.
All right, Counsel Kim, could you repeat yourself, please?
Yes, can you hear me, Counselor?
Yes, I can.
I don't believe it's necessary for you to abstain. Your interest in this matter does not conflict with our local ethics code.
Thank you.
All right, very good. Are there any additional questions or comments from counselors? Very good. Seeing none, we'll proceed then to roll call. Madam Clerk.
President, Counsel Adamson?
Counsel Adamson, aye.
Counsel Anay?
Counsel Anay, aye.
Counsel Barth?
Barth, aye.
Counsel Boots?
Boots, aye.
Counsel Brown?
Brown, aye.
Counsel Carlino?
Carlino, aye.
Counsel Dilk?
Counsel Dilk, aye.
Counsel Ethan Evans?
Counsel Ethan Evans, aye.
Counsel Jared Evans? Counsel Jared Evans?
Counsel Jared Evans, aye.
Counsel Graves?
Counsel Graves, aye.
Counsel Gray?
Aye.
Counsel Hart?
Hart, aye.
Counsel Holiday?
Holiday, aye, thank you.
Counsel Jackson?
Counsel Jackson, aye.
Counsel Johnson?
Counsel Johnson, aye.
Counsel Jones?
Counsel Jones, aye.
Counsel Lewis?
Counsel Lewis, aye.
Counsel Mascary?
Mascary, aye.
Counsel McCormick?
McCormick, aye.
Counsel Maury?
Counsel Maury, aye.
Counsel Oliver?
Aye.
Counsel Osalee?
Counsel Osalee, aye.
Counsel Potts?
Counselor Potts, aye.
Counsel Ray?
Counsel Ray, aye.
Counsel Robinson?
Counsel Robinson, aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. The vote is unanimous.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. There is no business under special orders, I'm sorry, Special Service District Council. There is no business under new business. And so, the next item on our agenda is announcements and adjournment. The documented agenda for this meeting of council having been completed, the chair will now entertain motions for adjournment.
Mr. President?
Chair recognizes Counsel Maury.
Mr. President, I have been asked to offer the following motion for adjournment by all counselors in memory of Crystal DeHahn and Mark Tony Duncan, by all Democrat counselors in memory of Betty Cochran, by Counsel Osalee in memory of Leland Thomas and Isaiah Cooperstein, by Counselor Adamson in memory of Joel Asputh and Angela Summer, by Counselor Holiday in memory of Patricia Lockman and Donna Almond, by Counsel Anay in memory of Barbara McLaughlin, Stan Newman, and Marshall Alexander. Mr. President, I would like to move the adjournment of this meeting to, of this Indianapolis City County Council in recognition of and respect for the life and contribution of those persons I have specifically named. I respectfully ask the support of fellow counselors. I further request that the motion be made part of the permanent records of the body and the letter bearing the council's seal and the signature of the president be sent to a family of each person advising of this action.
Thank you, Counsel Maury. Hearing no objections, the motion is received. Under the request as so ordered, hearing no further motions, we are adjourned. Thank you, counselors.